I would like to welcome everybody to tonight's swearing in of our newly re-elected county commissioners. Appreciate all of you being here. I'm Steve Morris, current chairman of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. So, welcome. We'd like to introduce some special folks that we've got with us tonight. And I'm sure I'll miss somebody, so just raise your hand and tell me if I do. But most importantly, the families of some of our commissioners to be sworn in. Commissioner Blake Keiger has his mother, Beth Keiger, here tonight. His wife Nancy and his son Davis. Lynn Shue has his wife Patty here with him tonight.[52.57][52.57](Laughter). Did he deny? Also, we're proud to have the mayor of Concord, Bill Dush, with us here tonight. Also, Concord City Councilman Sam Leader and District Attorney Roxanne Vanikoven is with us. And also, our newly sworn in sheriff of Cabarrus County, Van Shaw, and his wife Tana. And so, we appreciate all you being with us tonight. This is an exciting part of the year for us, you know, after these candidates have gone through campaigns and experienced all that that brings. To reach this point is a very exciting thing for them, for sure. And we so much appreciate all the citizens that run for elected office. And thinking about elected office, and for some of you that heard me speak earlier today at Van Shaw's swearing in, I'm going to use some of the same comments because I think they're relative. And with the passing of former President George H.W. Bush, we have all heard a lot of discussion on television, comments on the radio, and some of those things I think are very impactful. And certainly, some of those things that I think any of us would be proud to, for someone to say about us upon our departure. But the headline says, "A Kinder, Gentler Nation," is what George Bush called for. And I think he did things to cause that to happen. And that is really what we've tried to do on a smaller scale here in Cabarrus County. I think all of the commissioners pride themselves on the things that we've been able to accomplish with cooperation between the municipalities, with our own departments. And so, that has been an important thing for us. The other words that you hear so frequently are honor, integrity, and character. And we hear that repeated all the time about George Bush. And then, the next three words are grace, civility, and social conscience. And all of those things are important, in my opinion, to any elected official. And I think our three incoming, or our three re-elected commissioners all possess those qualities and demonstrate that on a regular basis. One of the other comments is, "We badly need to bring some stability back to our public discourse." And I feel like we have accomplished that here in our community, and we should be proud about it. And then, the final comment that I think is particularly important for somebody being sworn into office is, "There will be very tough times made even more difficult by criticism that you think is unfair." Don't let the critics discourage you or push you off course. And of course, that is a part of being an elected official. You know, you're going to, if you stand up and you take a position, then there are always going to be people that disagree with you, and that's okay. That's the way the world works. You just have to understand that and push forward and stay on track and do the best thing you can. But on to the swearing in. And so, we'll start with the Honorable Kristi Wilhelm, who will officiate for the swearing in of Commissioner Diane Honeycutt.
You'll please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Cabarrus County Commissioner, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations, and thank you for your time today.[331.12][331.12](Applause).
Thank you. And now, the Honorable Nathaniel Nust will officiate for the swearing in of Blake Keiger. And Blake, if you want to bring your family up here, we hope you will.
Mr. Keiger, if you could put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you solemnly swear and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities, so help you God?
I do.
And do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Cabarrus County Commissioner, so help you God?
I do.
All right. Congratulations, Commissioner Keiger.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have the Honorable William Hamby Jr., who will officiate for the swearing in of Commissioner Lynn Shue.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
And do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Cabarrus County Commissioner, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to offer time to each of the newly sworn in commissioners to make a few comments. We'll start with Commissioner Honeycutt.
Trying to make them short and sweet, but I just want to thank you guys, you and the citizens of this county, for giving me the honor and the pleasure for serving the last four years and for an opportunity to serve another term. I'm the person who said prior to 2013 that I would never, ever run for political office, but I did it twice, so I've learned to never say never. But with that said, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with the commissioners who are here this evening. We have worked well together. We've tried to keep the reason that we're elected in front of us and keep it non-personal and just looking at the right thing for the citizens. And I think some of the opportunities that we've been able to put forth with the Elected Officials Summit, which City Councilman Leader can speak to, but it's been a very successful opportunity because for us, the spirit of cooperation and collaboration was key. And getting together with those municipalities and other organizations in this county, I think it's been a big benefit to our citizens. The other part is trying to be transparent. One of the things that we've done was the out and about series, upped the game on the social media and surveys, and just trying to stay in front of our citizens and see what we're doing that's working and that kind of thing. There's many more. I'm sure some of the others might hit on, but just thank you so much. It's been an honor and a privilege and something I will always cherish. Thank you.
Commissioner Keiger.
Well, thank you. The first thing I'd like to say is thank you to my family for coming and Nancy for the support for when I'm gone and we're here late at night and taking care of business for the county. I know when I get home, I've got all the support that I need. So, it is truly an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of this county. We live in a great county. This is a great place to live and a great place to raise a family. I'm very proud and happy that I raised my family here, and I want to make sure that it's better for the people coming behind, that we leave it better than we found it. So, it's truly, for a civics nerd, somebody whose favorite class in eighth grade was civics, to swear an oath to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of North Carolina is a powerful moment and something I'll never forget. And I am truly honored and humbled that the citizens of Cabarrus County have asked me to fulfill that role and provide some leadership for the county. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Shue.
I usually don't write notes. I usually just add, "Go on," you know? But there was so much that I wanted to say, and I figured if I wrote it down, I could probably say a whole lot more, a lot quicker, because that way I won't go off chasing rabbits or something. So, I wanted to just make it sort of short and sweet. You know, I used to accuse my pastor of that. Now, I'd say, "You know, you're doing such a good job, but you get off to chasing rabbits and you lose me." So, I just want to stick straight to the point here. But first off, you know, I want to give thanks to the Lord Jesus Christ for giving me the help, the health, and the strength to be able to do this. This is not an easy job, what we do. Most people think, "Well, we just attend two meetings a month. That's all it is to it." Well, it might not be quite so bad if it was just two meetings, but we all know that there's probably 35, 38 other boards and committees that we split up between the commissioners. And so, we're running somewhere all the time, but we do for a reason. We enjoy it, and there's a lot of good intentions behind all of that. And then, I want to thank Patty, my wife, you know? She's just been there, you know, for me through so many things. Some of you know, some of you may not know, but 43 years of putting up with me. And so, I thank her, Patty, for that. And Diane and Blake and, you know, the others that we work together as a team, you know? I couldn't have done it without you and without all of the other people here in this room that supported me, that helped me along the way. And I'm just thankful for that, and I'm grateful, and I'm honored, you know, because it is a, it's a real privilege to be able to do what we do, and very few people can do it. And like we learned today, Van, you're the 38th sheriff for Cabarrus County. And when you think about that, in the line that may go from here on, I never know how long it'll be, but you're 38. I don't know where we are with commissioners, but, you know, I'm thankful for that. And another thing is, is that I didn't really give it a lot of thought during the campaign because we wasn't thinking about losing. We were thinking about winning. Our mission was set before us, and we knew what we had to do, and we got out there with the help of all of our friends and family and neighbors and thousands of other people there. We won. But it hit me the last couple of days, though, when I was thinking about, what could I possibly say to you folks today when we were here? And I got to thinking, I said, "Well," you know, I really wasn't worried too much about losing, but what hit me was, what if I hadn't won? Then I got to thinking, I said, "Well," I got sort of down. I said, "I guess I'd have to join Judge Hamby at the K&amp;W, and people come by and say, 'Can I serve you a vegetable?'"[862.12][862.12](Laughter). Or at the Walmart, you know, "Welcome to Walmart, Judge Hamby." I don't know if he's still here or not, but that's an inside joke. So, I won't be joining you at Walmart, or, you know? I guess I've got plenty to do here, you know? But the people of Cabarrus County, putting their vote of confidence in me and the others that were elected, our vision has been renewed. Our strength has been renewed. The confidence that you people put in us will make us strive harder to be a better public servant. And so, once again, I thank you. I didn't mean to take up so much time, you know, but it's just a great honor to be able to serve these great people of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you all, and congratulations. I certainly, for one, am very pleased that you will be continuing on for four more years on our county commission. That concludes our ceremony here tonight. We have some refreshments off to my right that I hope everybody will hang around and have something to eat. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM in the commissioners' chambers upstairs for our organizational meeting, which will probably last not more than 15 or 20 minutes. Then, we'll move to the multipurpose room after that for our regular work session. So, thank you again for coming, and please enjoy the refreshments. Would like to call to order the December 3, 2018 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. We are happy to have the honor guard from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department for our presentation of colors tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're very pleased to have with us tonight Senior Pastor Marty Peyton from Charity Baptist Church for our invocation.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here tonight. And I just want to clarify something from Lynn's speech downstairs. I am his pastor, and he said that his pastor sometimes chases rabbits. That was not me. It was his former pastor, just so you know, all right? Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this occasion that's brought us together. God, I thank you for our commissioners, and it's my prayer tonight that you would guide them in all that they do, all the decisions that they make. And Lord, as we talked about downstairs, we pray that honesty and integrity and character and civility would be the rule of this governing body. And so, I pray tonight that you would just help them to work in cooperation with one another, and God, I pray that they would get a lot accomplished. And Father, we would be amiss if we did not lift up in prayer our former president's family. We pray for the Bush family tonight as they are mourning the loss, and as our nation mourns the loss of a great man of integrity, a great man of great character and integrity. And we pray that, Lord, the decisions that he made and the things that he was able to accomplish would last a long time for us here in the United States. And God, I do pray for unity in our country, God, during the time that we do seem to be so divided. And I pray that right here in Cabarrus County, that you would help us to be unified around the things that matter. God, decisions that need to be made, things that need to be put into place. God, I thank you for our new sheriff. I lift him and his family up to you, and I pray for protection over all of those who serve us and protect us. And so, we pray tonight that you would guide and direct this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Peyton. We appreciate you being with us tonight. We have just celebrated the swearing in of our three newly re-elected commissioners, Commissioner Honeycutt, Commissioner Shue, and Commissioner Keiger downstairs, and had a nice reception honoring them afterwards. And so, this is our, actually, our first meeting of the year. So, this is when we have our organizational meeting. And so, I will turn the meeting over to County Manager Mike Down for the election of chairman and vice chairman.
Okay. We'll open up the organizational meeting for the purpose of elections of the chairman and vice chairman, and we will start with the nominations for the office of chairman.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Morris as chairman of this board.
And I would second that motion.
Are there, are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
Second.
All those in favor? As being no other nominations, Mr. Morris, Chairman Morris, you have been appointed by acclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate the confidence you have all placed in me. So, at this time, we will accept nominations for vice chairman of our board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Diane. She's done an excellent job, and I see no reason in changing.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
I will second the nomination, Commissioner Honeycutt.
Okay. Any other nominations? Do I hear a motion that nominations be closed?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second that nominations be closed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and you are elected by acclamation as well. Congratulations. Certainly appreciate the confidence that the board has placed in me, serving as chairman for another year. I think we've done some, we've had a very successful year. I think we've got a lot of important things in front of us in the upcoming year. I had mentioned to several of you, and I think in email, that hopefully this year, as perhaps by our January meeting, that we'll take a look at our committee appointments and see how we might switch some of those around a little bit so that we all have exposure to different areas. Most of the committees that I serve on, I've been on for six years, so I think it's time for all of us to learn a little bit about different areas, but we can talk about that some more. But for right now, we will adjourn this meeting, and we will reconvene for our regular work session down the hall in the multipurpose room in about 15 minutes. So, thank you. Session agenda, including the changes on page two. You all have that before you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with the changes? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to discussion items. First up, from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Midland Library Project Update. Kyle and Emory.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Just wanted to give an update on the Midland Library. All permits, all the plans for electrical and mechanical have been received, and they, of course, Midland Library, the owner of that space already had the permits for the drywall, so that is already up in place. We actually toured it a week and a half ago. All of the drywall is in place, and they'll start pulling all the electrical. We took the field measurements for all of the furniture, and Emory has finalized all those prices, and will be placing the order tomorrow.
Yes.
So, we look to have all of our furniture by the middle of January, and we're kind of in communication with Doug Paris from the town of Midland about when that renovation is going to be completed. Originally, there was talk of early January. I think probably now we're looking more at the middle of January. The beginning of February was the last discussion we had when we were touring it on site. And I'll let Emory speak about her staff and materials for the Midland Library.
Yes. The materials have already started to be purchased. We've got a couple purchasers in for books and things and have started sending those out, so we can't order too much because we don't have a place to store all those books yet, but they're slowly going to start trickling in as we move closer.
And we are working out the memorandum of understanding in terms of the operating lease, if you will, since it'll be a sublease with the town. We've already forwarded that on to our attorney, and we're adding some additional furbage into that agreement. So, we haven't yet sent that back to the town of Midland.
Any questions, commissioners? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda are commissioner appointments for 2019. You have a listing of all of those on page five of your agenda. I'd heard some discussion previously, perhaps delaying those appointments until our January meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would like for us to take, to table this particular item until January, and that will give us a chance to more closely look at these boards and committees. And there are several additions that's not on here. I don't know, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I know in my own case, there's three different appointments that I have that are not listed. And Lauren, I'll get with you on that, but I'd like for us to look at the different boards and maybe switch some of them around, simply because I've been doing what I've been doing for four years. Not that I don't like what I'm doing, I do, but I want to be more diversified with other county departments, other municipalities, and other things that the county is involved with to help broaden my knowledge of Cabarrus County. And so, I would like to make a motion that we table this, if we need a motion. I'd make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Have a motion and a second, and your motion wants to table it to the January work session? Okay. Great. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I think that's a good idea. I know there's, just changing them up will, I think will help us all. Is that something we can do via email, or do we need to sit and talk through each individual? I mean, if we're willing to give up some and we kind of want to keep some, how do we communicate that without having a two-hour meeting?
Well, I would think that if you have any particular desires, if you'd like to communicate those, and maybe Vice Chairman Honeycutt and I will sit down and try to come up with a tentative list, send it out to everybody, and then if it's good, we can approve it in January, or if there are adjustments that need to be made, we can do that. Does that sound agreeable?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we put what timeline maybe on that, when we want that by, if we're trying to bring it back by the January work session?
Good, good idea, because our January work session will be the first, January the 7th. So, if we could, I hate to overcommit us between now and Christmas, but if we could get it out by Christmas, that would give a week for everybody to look at it afterwards. Can we do that, you think?
Yeah. On to us with their suggestions by December 15th?
Yes.
Give us 10 days?
Yes.
Gives everybody else 12 days? Does that work? So, your thoughts of what you'd want to stay on and what you might want to, or if there's some particular committee you're interested in?
Yeah. That sounds like a good timeline. Great. Okay. Well, we need to vote on the motion. All in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm very limited in the times that I can meet because they have to be after 3:30 in the afternoon, so there are quite a number of these that are not an option for me. I am currently scheduled to be the chair for the Cabarrus Rowan MPO Board. I'll get, become chair in January, and the date on the WASAC is not correct. Jonathan and I have been reappointed since then, so I would want to keep WASAC. And Work Ready Community is one that I started, so I don't know that anybody else really knows enough about that one to do it. Same Early Childhood is not on here. And Central Line of Workforce Development Board is one that I benefit from in my full-time job. I understand if somebody else wants to do that one, but that one is very beneficial for me in my full-time job. So, those are the ones that I feel very strongly about, that I stay on. Other than that, if I have any other ones that somebody wants, that's perfectly fine, but there's no way that I can attend a 1:30 meeting or or a 1 o'clock meeting, or there's an 11 o'clock meeting here somewhere. So there are quite a few of those that I just can't attend because of my work. So I would like that consideration, at least for just those few boards, for me to stay on those. And any of the other ones that somebody wants, it's more than happy to jump into.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 4.2, resolution establishing Board of Commissioners 2019 meeting schedule, which I think the purpose, what is the purpose of that, Lauren? We added something?
It's the upcoming year.
For the upcoming year, okay. Okay, that just sets our, our meeting times for the upcoming year. And you know, I'm conducting, just like a regular meeting, voting, and this is actually a work session where we typically do not. Okay, any discussion or comments on the schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I did notice something, and I don't know, Lauren, if it's a typo, or if I'm wrong, and that is on the, the meetings, not the scheduled work session and general session, but in the other one, I don't reference NACO. Typically, we go to NACO, Mike, don't we, on Sunday? The Sunday and come home on Wednesday? Now, you checked behind me.
That's, that's the,
But I was thinking, though, that this second was on, was on a Saturday. Can somebody look and see if that's?
I think the conference actually runs the second through the sixth.
But we only go, though, on that Sunday, which would, I think, be the third.
That is correct. Sunday is the third.
Yeah, and it's on here as the second, and so if we're going to make this change, then I guess we need to add that, because that's the day we leave, on the third, don't we?
Yes, sir. Sunday morning.
So should we change that to the third?
I think as long as we, as we leave it the full dates of the conference, should somebody decide to go earlier, something like that, we're covered.
Well, that's fine. I just noticed that, I noticed that, you know, we typically go on Sunday. In this case, that would have been the third, instead of what we got here is the second.
Okay, any other?
Just one other comment. It looks like the quarterly summits, we've typically been the last month of the quarter, and these are all moved up a month. Is that a strategic idea? Was there any particular reason? I mean, I guess if we're setting the dates, it probably doesn't really matter. I was just curious.
We kept the same day of week and, like, second Wednesday, to keep that out of everybody else's council member's schedules. But we did try to stay away from the holiday, because this one, like, our December one, fell right in the holiday with Christmas parties and things. The July one was right in the middle of vacation time, so we tried to keep in mind the time of year, and so that was really the only reason.
Does that, excuse me, does that create a scheduling issue for you, or?
No, I don't, I don't think so, for this, this far out. It should be fine. I just, I mean, it was more of a curiosity, since, I mean, it moved up a full month, but.
Yeah, historically, we've had to move those around.
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Well, it's a lot of schedules to get together.
All right. Okay, any other comments? All righty, we will move to item 4.4, Performance Learning Center Stormwater Aisement and Maintenance Agreement. And Jonathan will talk with us about that.
I think you had the designation of voting delegate before that.
Oh, sorry, skipped over that one. Item 4.3, designation of voting delegate for the NCACC Legislative Goals Conference. I think Commissioner Shu did that year before last, and you plan to attend again this year. I would move that Commissioner Shu be appointed voting delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye. Up, here we are, again. We're not, we're not, that will go on our consent agenda for our regular meeting. And the next, the next one, we do need to vote on, which now we'll turn it over to Jonathan.
I was about to say, this one, the schools have requested that you consider tonight. This is the Stormwater Aisement and Access and Maintenance Agreement. It's just one of those things, you're giving up a property right, so it needs to go before the Board of Commissioners. Is that the Performance Learning Center? City of Concord requires this by their ordinance, Stormwater Ordinance, so it comes before you, but it's also going before the city council this week. So that's why the schools have asked that you act on this tonight, if you consider that.
Okay, any questions for Jonathan? I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. And now would entertain a motion to approve the, motion to approve the agreement between Cabarrus County and the City of Concord for the stormwater measures at the Performance Learning Center, and authorize the chairman to execute the agreement on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to item 4.5, Solicitation Policy Update, and Pam Dubois will talk with us about that.
Yeah, this is a board-approved policy from April of 1996, not too long after we moved into this facility. And we had a couple of changes. I've been currently working on a lot of the county policies over the last couple of months, and so this requires board approval, and the change would be to add Cabarrus Helping Hearts and Hands. It was United Way Fund, was it a typo, it was in there, and then the Red Cross Blood Drives, because we do not do just specifically Red Cross. Those changes were being made into the county-sponsored events, and then email has changed dramatically since 1996, and part of our policies is prohibiting employees from emailing other staff through their county email for solicitation purposes. And these were the two modifications that we felt would be necessary to update this policy and make it current with compliance. And so we were asking the board if they would make approval for these two changes. That are highlighted in yellow.
Any questions for Pam? All right, we move to item 4.6, from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Surplus Vehicles. Michael Miller will talk with us about that.
Good evening. The Conflict Resolution Center and Team Court have requested one surplus vehicle from the Cabarrus County fleet. County staff have identified asset number 8377. It's a 2015 Ford Police Interceptor with 100,000, 108,000 miles, as in a match for this request. According to the request from the Conflict Resolution Center and Team Court, the vehicle will be used to transport youth offenders that are working at various sites around the county as a part of their sentence and restitution. So the requested action of the board is for a motion to declare asset number 8377 surplus property and to authorize disposition in accordance with county policy. Are there any questions?
I did hear the Conflict Resolution Center talking about this. They were very excited that we were able to help them out with that. So that's going to be very beneficial to them, I think.
This was for the first time that they've had anything, is that right? Conflict Resolution Center?
As far as I'm aware, yes, sir.
They've never had a vehicle in the past?
They, I think, maybe they have had, that's where they transport youthful offenders to some of these work sites where they have community service.
Right, right.
Programs. I think it failed or worn out.
Having, having maintenance issues.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just, I guess the county will just dispose of that, or the Conflict Resolution Center will dispose of it?
They will dispose of it. The county does not.
Once we get rid of, we're done with it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, solid waste, Republic Services proposed recycling processing services agreement, and we're happy to have Kevin Grant with us.
Good evening. What we're here tonight is to present the Recycling Processing Service Agreement between Republic Services and Cabarrus County for approval. Just to give a background on what this is, this is when we collect the curbside recycling from unincorporated residents. The recycling that we collect at convenience centers, the recyclable material that we collect at the county schools and county buildings. When we offer the convenience of putting everything in basic in one container, especially for your curbside, it has to go to a sorting facility in which you sort out the plastic, the aluminum cans, the paper, cardboard, and so on. It's got to be presented to the recycling marketers that way. It's got to be, the commodity's got to be broken down. So there's a facility, there used to be two facilities in Charlotte which you could take it to. We're down to one facility in Charlotte. We originally had an agreement with Sunoco Recycling. We've had that agreement for about eight years. As of July 1st of this year, they no longer wanted to be in the residential recycling business. It is a very difficult business right now to be in. The recycling market's not very good right now. And there's a lot of contamination in residential recycling these days. It has been for a while. It seems like it's getting a little worse. This is not a Cabarrus County problem. This is a national problem. It's just very sensitive right now, because the recycling market prices are very, very low at this time. So just to backtrack a little bit here, this agreement that between us, that between us and Republic Services would replace the Sunoco recycling contract that expires end of this year. As I mentioned, they're no longer staying in this business. They, they let us know, in fact, Concord and Kannapolis were in scramble mode back in July, because they were given about a one-week notice that that was happening. So we've had a little bit of time. The problem that we face now is there is only one material recycling facility in this region right now. It's owned by Mecklenburg County, and currently it's being managed and operated by Republic Services. Now, that agreement with them runs out June 30th of next year, so that's why this agreement that I'm presenting tonight only covers six months. At this point, they're not sure who's running it. Mecklenburg County may assume ownership and running it themselves. At this point, they're still not sure. It could be Republic Services. It could be somebody else at this point. So right now, it's currently Republic. Really don't have a whole lot of other choices if we're going to continue to collect recyclables from unincorporated residents and to maintain our convenience centers. So basically, what the deal that they're presenting is a little similar to what Sunoco offered, except there's going to be a couple different things, is Sunoco Recycling had, like, a benchmark of $70 per ton for process, which is what their processing cost was. And based on what the market price is, we would either receive revenue if it was above the $70 a ton, or we would pay if it was below that with a floor of only $20 a ton, meaning that if it went below $50 a ton, we would still only pay 20 bucks a ton. And currently, that's what we're doing right now. The market's been hovering around $45 a ton for about the last six, seven months. Just to give you an example, in July of 2017, the average market price was about $90, $90 a ton. A lot of changes have, have caused that. One big change is China's really putting their foot down in terms of what we send to them. They no longer want our mixed paper. Part of that's the trade agreements that's going on. The other thing is, they are starting to generate so much paper, or used paper in their country, that they don't need our stuff anymore. The other issue that's going on right now is for the plastic that we send to them. Typically, they would allow about 20% contamination in the bales of plastic that we would send them. They have changed that to now they're demanding 5%. So that's causing our material recycling facilities in this country to really slow down the process, that they could pull out a lot of the contamination that, that goes in there. And like I said, this isn't a Cabarrus, or Charlotte, or North Carolina problem. This is actually a national problem that's going on. So the agreement that Republic is offering us right now is, instead of a $70 a ton benchmark, they're offering $86 a ton benchmark, meaning that if the market price is below $86 a ton, we have to pay that. If it's above, we get this, we get 75% of what's above that. The drawback with this agreement is there's not a $20 cap, meaning that if the market went down to zero, which I don't think will ever happen, but just for, just to say, if it ever did, we'd have to pay $86 a ton. So there is a risk to pay more. I don't think that's going to happen. Like I said, it's, for the last seven months, we're sitting at about $45 a ton. The overall trend is to start having it go up. Where it's going to go to and how fast, nobody's really sure about that right now. I'm in the process, I've got a webinar I'm attending tomorrow, and there's actually a state workshop on Thursday that myself and my colleagues with Concord and Kannapolis are attending to, in terms of what to do with the situation, how we can help to promote cleaner recycling to these facilities, meaning we, we need to work with these sorting facilities a little better to minimize their downtime. One issue that they have in terms of contamination is plastic shopping bags. Now, it's, it's plastic, it's recyclable, they'll stamp the recycling arrow on it, but we don't want those in the recycling carts. We don't want those in the convenience centers, because when it gets down to the recycling sorting facility, because it's a mechanical facility in terms of mechanized sorting out aluminum cans, paper, cardboard, et cetera, and plastic bottles, the plastic bags, which they get a ton of, if you go down there, it's amazing to see that, gets clogged up in all their sorting mechanisms, so they typically have to shut their facility down for two hours every day, just to clean the stuff out. When the market's good, it's not that big of a problem, because they can absorb some of this, but right now, when the market prices are very depressed, they need every minute of runtime possible, so that's been a problem. So we're looking at ways to educate the public, to produce cleaner recycling. We do have an app and software that's on the county website. It's called Cartology, that does at least educate and tell people, if you have a certain item, where you should put it. We're looking at possibly introducing a game to the website as well, in which we show different items, and you have to guess where you should take it to, meaning a recycling facility, or cart, garbage, whatever. And then from there, hopefully, learning what the public thinks they should do or shouldn't do. So the, the bottom line is going forward is we have to start to promote how to recycle right. And not that what's recyclable, but what's acceptable from folks. So that's an issue here. So with this agreement, what I'm looking at right now, based on trends, what I'm seeing is potentially it could cost us about $80,000 over the six-month period. A worst-case scenario, it could be $182,000, and like I said, that's absolute worst case. Right now, in the recycling budget, we have funds that should cover, if it stays where I think it should, we should be okay, but there's a potential that we could be short by the end of June. So, so we're going to try to monitor this. We're, like I said, we're working with Republic on how to minimize the costs that we have to help pay. But it's, it's definitely something that we have to do, because they are really struggling right now in terms of operating, operating these facilities. And without a cost share, there's a potential that these facilities may shut down, and there's no place to take this to. So it's something I'm not thrilled about, because for the longest time, we keep promoting recycling. We've given a false impression that recycling is free, that we just put our material in a bin, a cart, whatever, and somebody takes it, and they reuse it, they make money, but there's a lot of stuff that goes into preparing this recycle, recyclable material in terms of making it marketable for folks. And there is cost with that, but when the market's good, nobody cares. It gets absorbed, and we're all happy. But right now, the, the market's not good, so it's really showing what the true cost of recycling is. So like I said, it's not something that I'm thrilled about presenting. We're going to fight like heck to keep advertising it and to keep the cost down, but it is a reality right now, and I hope it's just a short-term reality, or it's reality that we're, we're facing right now, but. reality, or it's reality that we're, we're facing right now. But you have to look at what we need to do, especially in this region, when you look down the road and you see the Charlotte Motor Speedway landfill and how big that's getting. And they keep telling us there's a 15-year airspace remaining in there, but as the population continues to grow, I mean, that's always in question. So, when people ask me, "Why recycle?", one thing is, we want to divert as much stuff to that facility as possible because when that facility is full, what we're talking about here is going to be nothing. It's going to be a lot more expensive to take, to remove our garbage and the recycling, this, the recycling at this number is actually going to make sense and it'll actually be cheaper. So, and the other thing is, we, you know, we need to continue to reserve, reduce resources that we take from the environment too. So, unfortunately, there is a cost, but sometimes that's just the reality of it. So, any questions about this, the whole process, or the agreement itself?
Questions for Kevin? When you talk about the contamination of the recyclables, and of course, you cited the example of the plastic grocery bags, which I, I don't think most people know that. I'm not sure if I did or not. But things like, you know, they say, "Yeah, you can recycle pizza boxes, but you can't recycle them if they're greasy." Is that part of?
Yeah, that, there is, there's a lot of that stuff. They could handle the greasy pizza boxes, but what you also see is a lot of people just throwing regular trash in the recycling cart as well. Because that's one problem that I think that we created as a whole is, you created a cart with a lid. You put your stuff in that cart, close the lid, put it to the curb, not my problem anymore. And that's, that's a lot. I mean, there's a big chunk of the people that do it right, but it doesn't take a big percentage of the population to really mess it up. So, yeah, and, and part of it is, that's what we're trying to figure out, is how do we educate the people? What should you put in there? And I think a lot of us in the recycling industry kind of got carried away in terms of saying, "Yeah, put every, you know, more of everything." And it, it should be to the point where we need to work with these marketers in the recycling and say, "What do you want?", or "What can you handle?", as well. And so, we're starting to develop that relationship where you tell me what you want, instead of us saying, "This is what we want to send to you." So that's part of it. But yeah, plastic bags, they're, they're a big nuisance. People put in coat hangers, different pieces of metal in there that get caught up in the mechanisms. Now, obviously, a soup cam, aluminum can, things like that are fantastic, but people always look at, say, "Aluminum can, so that's metal, so I could take something else that's metal and throw it in the cart and throw it", and, and that's really actually doing more harm than good. So, and you hate to give the expression, "When in doubt, throw it out", because that's so, such a negative connotation, but sometimes it's the best thing to do.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item, Cabarrus County Strategic Plan, and County Manager Mike Downs and Lauren Teyara will talk with us about that. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Okay, good.
Kristen, Kristen's going to join Lauren as well.
Kristen and Kasha are also going to join me. We have to get a little.
We want to make sure the table is full.
Yes.
I need some backup. While they're doing that, does anybody need a copy of your survey results?
Are they in the agenda?
No, I just printed them all separately.
Well, Lauren's passing those out, just to, just to sort of introduce this item one more time. We talked about it a little bit last month and asked you to consider this, and we appreciate you allowing us to move forward with this, and also everybody for answering the, the questionnaires and the surveys that were sent out. From the staff level, we think this is important for you as a board, and especially important for us as staff, as we start to, the new budget process, and we look at the cash or receivables available, and the projects that we have coming up in not just next year, but over the next five, 10, 15 years, that you as a board are going to be needing to build in order to keep up with schools, to keep up with parks, to keep up with any of the other, the libraries, the senior centers. But then also, we want to, so we want to make sure that we're moving the budget in the right direction, so that there is a plan in place to address these, these growing needs or continuing needs. And so, we're going to be, we're going to be picking your brains now for, for quite a while, trying to pull that out of you as to, first of all, looking at the mission statement and vision and, and your objectives, to just make sure, is it what you want? Is it where you think it's at? And as we continue to go, we'll tweak it as we go, but also, we, we want to know what direction. Give us, what are your priorities? And, and so that we can budget accordingly, and then, then not only staff know, but then also the public knows as well, so that when you're out and about talking, and you're getting feedback and offering suggestions, and they're offering suggestions, that you'll know, you'll have a plan there with you that you can take with you to, to allow that to, to continue on with, with, that matches your vision. So, I'll turn it over to Lauren and Kristen and Kasha and myself. We'll all, Lauren's going to lead the discussion.
Okay, so, we met earlier today and discussed how we think that you guys, that we need to reiterate why this is so important. I mean, Mike, Mr. Downs just went over that. And so, it helps guide our budgetary decisions, sets the foundation for our departmental goals and strategies, serves as the foundation for prioritizing and planning, defines who we are as a county, and aligns with our county brand. I think that Mr. Downs really wanted to drive at home that when we get so many requests from the citizens, we want to show them that we have really thought about why we have chosen the things that we have chosen to fund. We want you guys to be able to support that. We want you to be able to show evidence for that. I don't know if, do any of y'all want to speak on that as well, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak to the performance measures. Oftentimes, our departments, it's performance measures for all of our departments have been a work in progress over the years, and so it really starts at the top, having, you know, a broad enough mission and vision to encompass all of our countywide services and departments, but also getting more specific as we have the board aligned goals and priorities that then the departments can kind of feed off of. So, that's a huge component of why we think the strategic plan is so important as well.
For our department specifically, we're already starting to meet and look at your various goals, and each of the members of our department are sitting down and saying, "What tasks can I do in 2020?", already in November, December of 2018, FY 2020. "What can I do to contribute to this?" And it's going to take us a few months to build it out and have it prepared for the budget that's coming, that you'll vote on in June. So, how this ties back to that is, you look at the mission statement, and it's more of a, what do you want the headlines to say about what we do as a county? What is the big picture we're going at? And it's a little bit hard to break it down because it is so vague and it encompasses so much, and it, it falls in line. What we have now does fall in line with what we do as a county. And so, I think what we're looking for is the why behind it. Even if you keep the mission statement at its current level, how does that, how does that break down? And what, what might be specific to this board versus the board that originally came up with it however many years ago? And what is our, how is our vision different from, from that place? So I think while we have the good starting place, we're really looking to identify with who we are now. Last year, we tried to do this exercise and connected it to the brand. The mission, again, is a little more vague than a vision, but I see the vision, and someplace we're going, not today, but in a few weeks or a few months, as what do we want our next brand to be? So not thinking about where we are now, but when people look at the county 10 years from now, what do you want us to be remembered by? What do you want your legacy to be? And the foundation for that is identifying who we are underneath this mission statement.
Yeah, so, I'll start out by saying thank you for filling out the survey. Maybe I should give you some background or give everybody else background on this. I sent out a survey to you guys. There was a worksheet that had the same questions in it from the agenda packet, and it was just a couple of questions. We'll get into them in the, in the slideshow, trying to tap in a little deeper into the mission and vision. So, the process is only possible with your input. So even though it was just a simple activity, it was thought-provoking, and it, and it allowed us a deeper understanding of your perspectives on, on what you want from the mission, or if you, you know, want to keep it the same, or continue forward. So, it was sort of like, you know, in elementary school when a teacher tells you, "Hey, let's, let's do a free writing exercise. Just start writing", and then those things will start coming up with themes, and we'll, we'll bring it together. And, and so that's kind of what we did here. We had 11 responses from commissioners, county manager's office, and communications, and no two answers were the same. There were a lot of different answers. There was a lot of variation, and there was a lot of diversity. So, it also gave us a lot of insight into coming up with a more comprehensive answer for each of those questions. Do you want to go ahead and? So, our first question was about our actions, what we do. And this right here is a word cloud. It shows common words that appeared in everyone's answers. The more elaborate your answers, the more common your answers, the more words you'll see in these word clouds. So here, you can kind of see, you know, a couple of words. They don't quite pull it together, right? So, that's one of our points here, is saying, you know, all of our, all of our, all of your answers were very diverse. So, if you keep going, all right. So, I went through and analyzed all of your responses, came up with all of these common themes. You have your public safety, which is already in our mission, the education, economic growth, investments, fiscal responsibility, transparency, land preservation, conservation, and the list just keeps on going. Everybody had something different to provide. You want to keep going? All right. So here is our next question, our cause. Who do we serve? You know, pretty standard, right? Duh, we serve the citizens. But no, we have citizens, visitors. You want to go to the next slide? We have residents, business owners, employees, regional and state partners, and the list goes on here as well. And then we have our impact. Why do we do what we do? So you see that this is pretty sparse, huh? Yeah, so, we have all of these answers that came through. So, we, we do what we do to have a thriving community, for future impacts, to provide programs and services that better quality of life. That's one that's already in our mission. Exceed resident expectations for the value received. Support youth, continued education, job placement, mandates from federal and state government, citizen safety, encourage, we're encouraged to do so by citizens or boards. So, our current, these are themes from our current mission, and these are what were in the activity. I'm going to open this question up to you guys. Was, were, were the things that you saw within those slides, are they aligned with these themes? Okay.
I would, I would say so, yes.
Okay. All right. Want to go to the next one?
Well, I was going to make one note. Yeah, so.
Can I ask you a question? Because there was a word cloud that you said, you made a comment, you said, "Kind of sparse."
Yeah.
Can we go back to that and just?
Sure.
Expand on, I mean, maybe, when you say sparse, you mean, we all zeroed in on the exact same things, and that's why there's not many words? Or we were so far out in left field that, boy, we couldn't barely come up with anything to put on the slide?
Y'all were all in different directions, that these, that these were the only common words that were, that were pulled from.
Okay.
And the bigger the words, the more it was, like, multiple people had said that same word, so that's why you're seeing the variation in sizes.
And if, excuse me, if I could talk a little bit about our process, Lauren had sent this for each of us to do individually. But for me, it was hard to work within a vacuum and answer these questions. So I happened to pull in a few folks from communications. There were a few folks from infrastructure and asset management who were in the department at the time, and we sat down and dug into it. And it started with, okay. We went through the questions, what do we do? And of course, we rattled off everything that the state legislature says that we have to do. And that was like, okay, now let's think beyond that. What do we do? And then it was, what distinguishes us? And what started out as the same kind of responses that were more legalese than anything, became a, a great discussion on why we do what we do, and how that's making an impact. And I think that's where all this was leading to a discussion that we were supposed to have today. What, when we say, "What do we do?", what do we do as Cabarrus County? When you see your colleagues at state conferences, or when you see a resident who walks up to you and says, "Thank you for what you've done", what are those moments? What are those small celebrations that you hear, that you think to yourself, "My goodness, we've got something great going on"? How do we identify those and make that part of our, part of our mission and part of what we stand for every day when we come to work? And how do we not lose sight of, we, we happen to create those moments because we have a great team together. But how do we remind ourselves that those moments are not by chance, and those moments are what we need to contribute toward each day? So not to take away from that, but, you know, we took it in a, in a different direction. It was good to have that conversation. So, I would say, you know, when you, when you think about these questions, don't think so analytically about it. Let yourselves freestyle a little bit and explore what the possibilities are, and what you want us as a staff to do with that information.
One thing that I noticed on that particular question there, why do we do what we do? And you've seen the remarks or the responses, it was because of the citizens from, for Cabarrus County. And when you think about it, every one of us that's involved with county government, whether we be county commissioners, or whether we be finance, or wherever it might be, our ultimate job is to serve the citizens of Cabarrus County. That is our ultimate job. But now, how to break that down into a different segment, that I don't know, because that is the top priority, to serve the citizens of Cabarrus County. And, you know, as I said in my response, you know, to everyone, it's, it's something that's a top priority for me, is to be a servant. And, you know, even though you're doing what you do, Kasha with communications, and Kristen and Lauren with finance, ultimately, you're serving the citizens of Cabarrus County, because what you're, you know, what you're doing affects them. It affects the budget that the county manager does, and the rest of the Pam, and the rest of the people. It has an effect on everybody, and we're all citizens. And so, when you look at it, how do you expound on that?
Well, and Commissioner Shu, I think what you've said is something very personal to you, and too often, we're told to just stick to the facts and think globally about this stuff. I think what we're asking you to do is find, tell us what it is, what it means to you. And that's going to be different for each of you, but you were elected based on those principles. You were elected at large based on those principles. And so, there's a segment of the community that believes in you and those principles, and we need that to come through. So, your individual thoughts probably won't make it into the mission statement or vision, but if you express what that means to you, and Commissioner Honeycutt does, and Kiger, and Poole, and Morris, then we're going to find ourselves in a different place because we're looking at it a different way. And we're a personable community, and I think I, we've learned through the branding process that people are open to that. So it's shifting our view, and it's okay to make it personal, and it's okay to make it about where you want to see the county, because that's, we're looking to you for your leadership on that.
And you're exactly right. And that's, and it is personal to me. And that's why each of us should feel that same way. You and your job, you and your job, it is personal. You know, you don't just come to work and say, "I'm here today." You know, you have a purpose. You have a reason for showing up. You've got to have something, I mean, I'm, I'm one for purpose. I believe in having a purpose-driven life. You know what? You know what you're going to do when you get there, and you know why you're going to do that. And so, if mine seems personal, you're right, because it is.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add to that? I think that's along the right track.
I'll just make a comment. I think this is going to be a good exercise for us to do. This is not my strong suit, as you probably can guess by the response you got from me. I deal in very rigid, hard, right angles at work, the business that I run. This is not that. And so, you know, when you're trying to get out of your comfort zone, answering these type of questions and free... What did you call it? Freestyling?
Yeah. This is why I don't build buildings as well.
I don't know what that means. But I'm enthusiastic about what we're trying to accomplish, because it does and it should benefit everybody that lives here. And I'm thrilled to death when I heard you say that you had other people and you got 13 subs or something. I thought you were doing this based on our five responses. And I knew what I gave you, and that left four. So, thankfully, your net's a little wider than that. But anyway, I guess I wanted to at least mention that I'm glad we're doing this. Hopefully, it will produce good fruit for us, and thanks for all the hard work. Because it's going to take a lot to get there. I can recognize my own shortcomings, and one of them, I'm sure, you know, they're not that hard to see. So, we'll do the best we can.
The good news with a process like this is you can always stop, breathe, and revise.
Alright, we'll continue then. Alright, so, the last question pretty much hit at the vision statement. If our success could be guaranteed, what would the end result of our efforts look like? And here we have, again, another little sparse word cloud. Keep on going. And this is not the only slide of responses to that question. This question had a lot of different answers. So, infrastructure that supports growth, community collectively engages and supports initiatives, understanding the value of tax dollars, well-informed citizens. That was a really big one, actually, well-informed citizens on different fronts. And the list just keeps going. Go to the next slide. If you want us to back up at any point, please let us know. But, I mean, these were really good responses, but they were different. Everybody had different answers. So, I'll just let y'all read that for a second. Read through those. Alright. Okay, so, I'm going to pose the question again. Is the survey aligned with what our vision currently says? These are our themes from our vision.
Is there anything in that list that sticks out to you, just as a resident, that you feel either needs to be more specific, or that we can make an impact with?
I guess I would ask a question of what we are doing that calls dreams to matter more.
I want to say that is the biggest question that a lot of people ask. So, yeah, what does that mean?
I mean, I agree that they do, but I'm not sure how we're impacting them.
Alright, so, I'm going to go ahead and emphasize again. Our thoughts brought together in this activity showed how diverse our thoughts are. All of our thoughts were so diverse, were leading up to a bigger picture. So, maybe it wasn't that we were going to change the mission or the vision. I mean, that's up to you guys. But maybe it's more of, let's define the things that are within our mission or vision. And if it turns out through this whole process that these things are defined in different ways, or that we think they need to be changed, then so be it. That's, I mean, that's completely up to the process and to us to do. So, we're not telling you to make any decisions right now. We're not, you know, we're just, you know, giving you the information, giving you these thought-provoking exercises to, you know, get some ideas. So, keep going. Alright, so here are questions to consider. And Kasha kind of tapped on this earlier. What sets Cabarrus County apart from other counties? So, we have these mandated services, but what do we do that's different? You know, you've got Mecklenburg County, you've got Catawba County, you've got all these other counties that are doing the same things that we're doing, but what are we doing differently than them? If y'all, you know, if anybody wants to have a stab at that one?
When you go to NCACC, what do people say about us?
I think we focus so much attention on meeting growth and dealing with growth issues, schools and otherwise, that, and I'm sure there are other counties that do that as well, but when I look surrounding us, I've had a conversation with someone yesterday about Rowan County. And we agreed that, given the choice of challenge of shrinking school systems and growing school systems, they'd rather have our problem than one that they're experiencing with declines. So, that would be one example, I would think.
Anybody else?
So, one thing that's been your priority for the last two years, three, four years, has been collaboration.
Microphone.
Not many counties get together with all the elected officials on a regular basis and discuss those issues that are similar and not so similar, but then also, how do you, but actually have serious conversations about, how do we do it better? How do we do it cheaper? And how do we do it together versus independently? So, I think that's one way you guys stand out above a lot of the other jurisdictions.
The good news there is we have reciprocity on the other end. We can sit here and talk about wanting to do that all day long, but if nobody else wanted to sit down with us, it wouldn't mean a hill of beans.
You're exactly right.
I mean, that's, to me, part of what makes our community unique, is we do have that on both sides. And I'm, I mean, that's great, but Mike makes a good point. I'm not sure anybody else is doing that. And that certainly does help us.
Okay. So, next question. What if the budget was to remain flat over the next five years? What priorities will be at the forefront to guide decision-making in a growing community?
Well, unfortunately, if the budget stayed flat, the schools would continue to grow and continue to age and continue to be maintained. So, that would certainly take a lot of priority if the budget were flat. So, I think, you know, obviously, we'd have to do all of those mandated services and then and deal with what might be left over, which I would imagine that would mean that we would probably have to limit our spending on parks and recreation and some of the non-essentials if our budget did not grow, which doesn't exactly fit in. If our population would grow, you would think the budget would grow with it, but that would be the one thing that, my thoughts on it.
One thing about it, in the event that that should happen, I listened, I think I was telling you just about, just briefly, Steve, I had listened to a speech that the Chairman of the Federal Reserve made on November 28th. I don't know if anybody else listened to it, but I just get into stuff like that. So, I listened to it. And he was talking about financial stability and economic development stability, and how they're intertwined between each other, how that economic stability depends on financial stability. And we have prided ourselves with having strong financial stability. And how those two, I mean, obviously, they know a whole lot more about it than I do, and they've got more aides that can tell them how it interrelates. But how that works, I don't know. But, just like what you said, Mr. Chairman, you know, if that happened, you know, there would definitely be some very strong decisions that have to be made to fall in line with, you know, a flat-type budget. And, you know, work only gets done through people. And people are our number-one asset. And I mentioned that in my response. So, the greatest asset that we have in this county, it's not the buildings that people work in, but it's the people that work in those buildings. Without the people, the building would only be a building. And so, we'd have to protect those things, but like you said, you know, the parks and possibly even schools could suffer in that event. But, one of the things that the chairman was talking about, not this chairman, the chairman of the Fed was talking about, and I never knew about it. When we had the recession in 2008, they had to figure out a way that we could prevent something like that from happening again in the future. And that's when they ran these banks and financial institutions and all through a series of stress tests to see what the institutions could handle. And they implemented procedures and things that would help them to prevent those type things from happening again. It happened in 2008. And they had, they said that, you know, we had made such strong improvements that even in the banking society, if we had a severe downturn like we did in '08, that our financial institutions could sustain themselves, because they were so much better off because of the stress tests that they run the institutions through. Now, how, you know, that could affect us locally? I don't know. But obviously, with a shorter budget, you know, flat money, there has, what is our plan? You know, so that's a very good question right there to ask. What is our plan in the event that we do have a downturn? What can we implement ahead of time that we can survive that and not lose positions, not lose growth, and all the things that we need and we depend on to keep the county going?
Okay, I'm going to flip that. What if your budget continues, your revenues continue to come in, and you've got extra money? What are we going to do with it?
That's an easy one. Because the growth in the schools, you know, with the rate the schools are growing between the, we all know, we all experienced that. The growth will definitely absorb the revenue increases. There's no question about that. And of course, you know, I'm not saying that the government, the local government, has to expand just because we got the money. You know, but I think, though, that we'll see continued growth in the schools. And that was the forecast, too, by the chairman of the Fed. That was the forecast, to have continued economic growth that we've had in the last couple of years. That would continue. But in that case, that just because, I've always been the conservative one, just because you got $100, that don't mean you got to go out and spend $110. And we can all relate to that. And, of course, we have a good reserve. We have the mandated reserve plus a little and well-managed finances. But we could surely attack a lot of things that need attention with the excess money. And that's just my thoughts.
I would answer that question also. I mean, if there were revenues available, you know, I think we'd want to go back and take a look at some of the services that we've discussed about expanding on the western part of the county, where we have strong population expansion, where we do not currently offer any library services or senior citizen center services. I think that those would be some of the things that we would definitely take a look at if the funds were available. And then, of course, we've got people in other parts of the county that want to talk about library expansion and other services. So, it wouldn't be a, I mean, there are plenty of needs out there, I think, and they're valid needs.
Obviously, the county's needs as well, from the perspective of the CIP list, the things that you have on there. That would be important to address.
So, I reframe, I don't think there's ever going to be enough money to do everything you need to do. So, what we want, what we want to over the next, you know, several weeks, months, is to figure out, what are your priorities? What is, I mean, is it, let's put a park in every quadrant of the county, and let's put a library every 15 square miles? Is it knowing that there's not going to be funds, but we can at least have a plan to make those happen over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? Or do we concentrate in one area and have, and not continue to spread those services all over the county, but to centralize the services? Or, we talk with our human services folks all the time, they're sooner or later going to grow out of that building up there. What do we do? What's the next human services center look like? Is it another large building where everybody still comes to the same location? Or do we have a core group of workers there, and then we have satellite offices everywhere or throughout the county? So, it's a shorter drive, it's more accessible, they're in the communities, and they'll know the community a lot better than if they're in one location. That's just one thing. We've talked about parks and rec. Do we stay in youth athletics? Yes or no? I'm not advocating one way or the other. Or do we just build parks and then make those parks passive, where you can come in, there's a ballfield there, or there may be just green space? Things like that, that's what we're looking at. And we're looking at our paramedics, our EMS stations. We hope that we're going to build one more hard building or hard structure adjoining the city of Concord. After that, we hope we, and a headquarters, but after that, we hope we don't build any more. Our plans are to work with you guys is to not build any more buildings. We might have many more ambulances, but we don't want to build those hard structures that cost money to build and then cost money to maintain, if we can strategically place those ambulances in other places throughout the county. So, those are some of the things that we're trying to, that we want to pull out of you guys, to make sure we're thinking in the right direction. And if there's something we're missing, or if there's something that's a higher priority for you, then we want to know what that is. And if we can get it down on paper, then everybody will know. So, and it's going to be some, many more meetings like this, but then some more meetings with the other elected officials in the county, what do they think? And really, some of your constituents all over the place as you go out and meet.
And I would say you're already starting to prioritize that. We have the early education committee. We have mental health. We have opioid abuse, opioid use. You're already defining what those priorities are for you as a board. And so, this is an opportunity to look at, what are the common themes between those initiatives? And other initiatives you want to start that aren't on the table yet? That's a lot of questions to answer, and a mission statement isn't going to do that. But it helps us put it under an umbrella, and it's a starting place, and it's revisable. And, yeah, there's a comma in it that I would be okay losing, if you guys want to go ahead and do that today. I'm just kidding, if there's an Oxford comma, but anyway. There's a lot that can be done under a large umbrella mission statement. And it's okay to move forward and say, well, this is where we are today, and we can come back and change that. But I think we're speaking more to later in the process. And when we get into the goals, and when we get into the vision, that's really where this conversation is going to need to develop. And we're absolutely going to need your input, because that's going to shape a lot of what we do as a staff.
So, I would say ditto to Commissioner Kiger's remarks. This is not my strong suit either. When I hear the things that you just said, though, I think it would be helpful to maybe thought-provoking to have that as a starting point. Would you want to do, here's some of the potential items. Then it might help get something going, because when those questions come up, they're so broad, that if you don't have the 30-year manager position, or you guys, you know, it's hard to pick, it's hard to get that far down in there when you feel like you're up here and you know there's not enough money now. You know, so I think if there were some starting point for us that then maybe brought other things to the forefront, then that might be helpful, because all of that was nice to hear and helped me.
I would like for us to also consider very strongly the I would like for us to also consider very strongly the community survey that was done, what the community, what they thought. I, I don't remember when it was done or how many respondents they were, but it was quite a bit. And I think that we need to remember those things when we're forming our new mission and our new vision statements, to include some of those items there that, that we can agree on.
Okay.
Are you guys, are you to a point where you're feeling comfortable right now that we can keep moving?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let me just say my closing statement.
Yeah. I hope it's a good one.
Okay, so, just like I said before, we're not asking for any decisions tonight, we just want your patience, we want your trust for the process, and your participation. Please participate, because this only happens whenever you guys give us input and give us feedback. We really value your feedback, so throughout the process. You can email me anytime you want to.
Thank you very much. We will try to, to be cooperative and responsive.
Okay.
And, and, and we will also be understanding if you need to tug us along a little bit from time to time, that may be required as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Take something more than a tug.
You said it, so you just opened up all the doors.
Okay, very good. Okay, next item on our agenda is the approval of the regular meeting agenda, which you all have in front of you. Do I hear any changes or corrections that need to be made to our agenda for the December 17th meeting? F1 has been tabled to January.
Just, under appointments, I know I'm on the list for Mental Health Advisory Board, so if someone else wants that, if you wanna change my name to somebody else's name, that's fine, but that one's on there. I just know that's, I was asked about that one. So if anybody else wants Mental Health Advisory Board, if you'll speak up and take that one, that's perfectly fine for me. If nobody wants it, then I'll leave it like it is, I don't have an answer on that. I don't know what, if anybody else was.
You're talking about H5?
H5.
Yeah, I think that's probably some.
There may be other ones on there, but I know, I know I'm one of them, so if somebody wants that one, say that you want it, and you can say it that night and change it, it's perfectly fine. I don't know about the other ones that are, if, if there's anything else on there, other than the MPO one that would have us on. I don't know if there are other appointments that have commissioners listed that somebody would wanna have a conversation about, since we've delayed the appointments to January, is what I'm trying to say. But if someone wants mental health, then speak up.
Okay, any other changes? Okay, if there are none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with the deletion of item F1, which is tabled to January. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and acquisition of real property per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11, A3 and 5. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.